I would like to call to order the June seventeenth regular board meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening and welcome. The first item of business is item one dot two, adoption of the agenda. I would entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
Agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to section two dot one announcements. We'll start with the gifts. Shawna, could you please read?
Yeah, absolutely. There were thirteen gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of seven thousand five hundred twenty dollars and thirty-nine cents. And there were twenty-one gifts received for the Ralph Ritter Food Shelf this period for a total of fifteen thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars sixty-eight cents. It's recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Thank you Shawna. Upcoming meetings, we have our next regular meeting of the school board on Tuesday, August nineteenth at seven PM here at the district center. At this time, we will move to agenda item two dot two, superintendent's report.
Wonderful. Thank you Diane. I've several things this evening, starting with student and program recognition. Irondale High School's Nightcrawler Robotics Team took first place at the Minnesota State High School League State Championship. The team partnered with students from Pequot Lakes and Becker to defeat the teams from Rochester, New London Spicer, and Sock Center in a tiebreaker match. This is the team's fourth state title. They have also won in 2013, 2014, and 2016. That's just a wonderful program and we're so proud of them. Also, Moundsview High School sophomore Soren Swenson won the singles title for Class Two A Boys Tennis at the Minnesota State High School League State Tournament in June. He won in straight sets with a six-two and six-four victory over his opponent from Wayzetta. Over at the state track meet, Moundsview High School had two track and field state champions, Casey Poplar in the sixteen-hundred meter run and Allison Richter in the three-hundred meter hurdles. Lulu Semikula from Irondale took second place in the pole vault. And the boys' team from Moundsview took second place overall. It was just a great showing from all of our student athletes. And for the thirteenth consecutive year, the Moundsview School District again won the Best Communities for Music Education Award presented by the National Association of Music Merchants. Moundsview is one of only nine Minnesota school districts to receive that designation in 2025. So congratulations to our staff, students, and everyone associated with our music program. And finally, just a follow-up related to staff recognition, I wanted to let the public know that more than two thousand five hundred thank you notes were sent out to district staff during our Staff Appreciation Week that we held in May. And we just want to thank everyone who took the time to reach out, send a note, and thank our wonderful, amazing staff members. And that concludes my report this evening.
Great. Thanks Superintendent Lennox. We'll now move on to item three dot zero, approval of the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
The agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is four dot one, resolution detailing capital projects levy for technology, safety, and security, and calling for a special election. I'd like to welcome Superintendent Lennox.
Thank you. I wanted to come and sit out front. I think this is an important item that I want to make sure the community is tuned into. And really, the next two agenda items are connected to budgeting for our future. But this first item, four point one, focuses on a resolution. And that resolution outlines the capital projects levy that is focused on safety, security, and technology. And as Chair Gleschin stated, also calls for a ballot question next November. So I want to spend a little bit of time providing some background for the public on how we're arriving here today. So as I think everyone knows, safety and security for our students, staff, and schools has been and will continue to be an ongoing priority for us in this district. And over the last two years, we've also been focusing on some district goals related to technology. During that time, we've completed actually several technology audits, two around safety and cybersecurity, and one that took a look at the learning environment in our classrooms and our schools. Through that work, we really started to identify recommendations that we thought were important for us to look at. And we've outlined some plans about how we want to move forward with those recommendations that came from the audits. One of the things that became clear as we continued to have conversations around those areas was that funding these efforts really was going to need to be a focus and a priority moving forward. So that led us to start looking for solutions. How would we do that? And how will we move forward with these plans? Many might not know, I know as board members you know, but in the public, that currently any of our technology funding that we do is coming out of our general fund. We do not have a separate dedicated funding source at this time for those technology needs. That can really put them in competition with other classroom and learning needs. It's a difficult position to be able to maintain the programs and services that everyone has come to expect in this district and also make a priority of funding safety, security, and technology. Now fortunately, the state does allow school districts to access dedicated funding for those purposes. And our resolution tonight that is in front of you in your packets really is the start of moving forward with that process, ultimately culminating with a community vote next November. So for the public, a little bit more background information, through the work we've done over the last several years, really looking at our technology in the district and the district operational goals we've worked through, here's a few things we've learned. First and foremost is that our schools are safe, but they could be safer. I think our school district has recognized that we are now, not just Moundsview, but school districts generally, one of the top targets for cyber criminals. Healthcare, finance, and school districts really are targets. And our district team, along with our security vendors, have shared with us that we face daily challenges. People trying to access our information, access our data, attacks coming from the outside, really looking to get into our school district. And we want to make sure we're forming the right security measures we need to protect our, again, our staff, our students, and all of our data. Our school safety and security equipment, we've learned over time, you know, some of that's becoming dated. We need to take a look at that. We need some refresh to happen to our existing equipment. We also have areas where we probably could use some additional equipment across the district. And that would be things like when people say, well, what do you mean by technology security? What does that look and how would that work? Well, I think if you went to any of our sites, they would provide information like security cameras, radios. We have them. They are becoming dated, probably need to be refurbished, refreshed. And in certain areas, we could use maybe some more radios. We could use some more cameras as we go forward. I should also say, when we talk radios, it's walkie-talkies. Like people are thinking, well, radios, what do we got kids carrying around their radios? Nope. Nope. We're talking about communication devices, the walkie-talkies that we use in schools. And certainly, those are pretty powerful and need to be to get through some of the cement walls and buildings and travel in the spaces we need them to, to make sure that we're continuing communication for our staff. Another thing that's come up, visitor management equipment. So we want to make sure that as people visit our schools, that we can record who's coming, who's going, letting them in and having access to our sites. We want to make sure that we have up-to-date software, up-to-date equipment in our front offices as folks come to visit our schools. We've also talked about the need for upgraded in-school communication. I think many of us of an age remember the old PA systems where they'd tap on the microphone and attention staff and students. Those days are gone. I mean, we really have moved to digital communication. Much of it can be done now through PAs and phone systems. But what we've really learned is there are now digital display options within classrooms and within schools. So if you think about an incident that's happened, maybe it's a hold, we put kids in a hold for a medical emergency. We need to transport a student or staff member from point A to point B. We don't want anyone in the halls. We won't need that clear to be able to do that. When we get on the PA and announce we're in a hold, people's minds tend to go places that they don't need to. It's usually a worst-case scenario as they start to think of, why am I being held here? With the digital displays, that information can come up. We're in hold. It's a medical emergency. We expect to be clear in about ten minutes. I mean, more information comes. It lowers anxiety for our students, for our staff, and frankly, for some of the parents who get texts and other information from their own kids about, hey, what's going on? So we're looking at moving in that direction for sure. Electronic door locks and fobs, that's another. We have some. We do have that technology. But that's a direction we'd like to move in and do more with in the future. If you think about keys, if we have to give out a key and somebody loses a key, then I may have to replace a lock. With an electronic lock or a fob, at any point, I can turn off that access. If somebody loses their fob, we shut it off. If for some reason, we don't want somebody to access a particular space at a particular time, we can set conditions around when they can access and when they can't access. So that really provides a whole nother level of security as well. But again, tied back to that technology that we're using and want to continue with. In our classrooms, we also have needs around learning and inner learning spaces. So our interactive displays and smart boards, some of them have been around a while. They're needing a refresh. They're needing a refurbish. They're needing to be upgraded. So that's an area of focus. I think as we've talked with staff, they're identifying as something they'd like to see happen. Equipment is becoming dated, needing to be updated in classrooms. Our student devices, our staff devices, some of the learning technology, whether that's computers, tablets, other technology devices that we use, we need to have ongoing replacement cycles. They only last so long, and then they need to be replaced and upgraded moving forward. Additionally, we've talked with some of our teachers working with STEAM equipment and software in our maker spaces. Those are areas too, we've made investments in. But again, equipment, technology becomes dated and could be upgraded so that kids are having the best experience they can with that equipment. So those are just some examples of needs we've been talking about with our staff and within the district. You may recall, I know the board recalls, but if the public is watching us closely, they may remember that we've worked with Morris Leatherman Company. And earlier this year, we actually had Peter Leatherman here to share information with the public about the surveys they had completed out in our community. They had completed both a parent survey as well as a community survey. Both came back indicating significant support for the needs we're talking about, safety, security, and technology. In fact, they were specifically asked, those who were involved in that survey information, about a question, funding projects up to ten million dollars. And if the public's watching and just hearing said, well, I wasn't asked about that, and ten million seems like a lot, well, I can promise you, if you want to sit down with us and start adding up the costs of an over eleven thousand student district and sixteen hundred employees, the cost of the cameras, the radios, visitor management, devices for students and staff, smart boards, et cetera, it really adds up quickly. It is a significant investment. And again, we're only at this point having access to general fund dollars to make some of those investments. So what we're looking for really is a dedicated funding source. We know that in the future, without that, we will be faced with tough choices. Classroom learning over safety and security. And I know I'd prefer to be able to fund both. I think both are incredibly important. I think the community would prefer to fund both. And that's really why we're here tonight. We want to provide that opportunity for our community to have a say. And if they think that's important as well, moving forward. So tonight, as a board, you have the opportunity to approve this resolution, which will put a question on the ballot in November. That will provide dedicated funding for school safety. It will provide needed funding for the learning technology we talked about. And at the same time, then it will preserve the general fund and the funding that already exists that can be focused on our classrooms. So over the course of the year, we've had opportunities to discuss this. Administration is recommending approval of that resolution. We believe this is the right direction. And as a board, with your approval tonight, we will begin sharing public information and getting out information well in advance of any question showing up on the November ballot for the election. So with that, I would again say, we are recommending approval of the resolution. And I'd be happy to open up if board members have any comments or questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time as well. Thank you.
Any questions?
Well, I'd just reiterate, Chris, you mentioned that we've talked about it quite a bit over the last year as a board. And for everyone in the public to know that we've explored these issues in work sessions, we don't take lightly the responsibility of going to our residents and asking for an increase in taxes. But definitely do feel like this is a need. We took, you know, you and your team put forward as a district operational goal two years ago to look at our technology and really do a very thorough audit at that time. And I think that was the right direction to go, to really look at what needs we had and really get an assessment of risks for our students and our staff and their data. So glad to hear that, you know, we've done the homework. We know the reasons. We know through that audit that we have some needs. We have some gaps. And like you said, our schools are safe, but we want to continue to be on the front edge of this. This is ever-changing, as we all know, with, right, new computer software, new phone updates, all those kinds of things for all of us continually in our own lives. We know that all that technology just is continually changing and adapting, as well as, you know, bed actors out there trying to get into that data.
Great points Heidi. Any other questions? All right. I would entertain a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
So moved.
Second.
The resolution has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
So we're going to keep Superintendent Lennox up for item four dot two, and we're going to welcome Paula Steele, Director of Finance. They're going to give us an update on the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Fantastic. Well, thank you for giving us the opportunity to do this. Each year, school districts have to adopt a proposed budget for the upcoming school year. This year was a little bit more challenging with the delay at the state level going and the legislature going to the special session. So that pushed us a little bit later in pulling all of this stuff together. So in large part, we're still waiting for information that we know will be coming from MDE, probably throughout the next weeks into the summer and in preparation for the fall. But tonight, we are bringing forward a proposed budget based on the information we have at this time. Kind of inherent in the work we do each spring is knowing that as we get updated information, we'll put in those numbers, update it, and bring it back to the board in the fall as an amended budget, right? Once we have the actuals and bring that back so we can move from projection to actual. I do want to thank Paula for being here with me tonight. She has put in a ton of time, energy, and effort trying to pull all of this stuff together. She and her team are amazing. Given the unique circumstances of the year, the timing of this, and the fact that I've done it a couple times, and this is the first time for Paula, that I would be the spokesperson and talk us through that. But I just need you to understand how much time, energy, and effort she and her team have put in behind the scenes to get us where we are today. So with that said, let me highlight a few things for the board and the public. You have your summary budget documents as board members. And first, one of the things I guess I would say for the public, the school board knows this, we really do take a conservative approach to budgeting. So we intentionally look at revenue, and we don't over-project. We don't expect more than we think we would get. We keep that, you know, really conservative, also with expenses. If anything, we roll up, we probably might spend a little bit more, so we better budget for that just in case. That philosophy has paid dividends for us. I think it really has allowed us to stay in a strong financial position for some number of years. And we intend to do that moving forward. And I think you'll see that reflected in the budget that's in front of you this evening as well. So maybe I'll just highlight a few things in your packet. I am not going to take you through all pages, but just some of the highlights. If you wanted to look at page one, that gives you an overview of the projected revenue and expenditure for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And really, for our purposes, I'm going to use rounded amounts. All right? So that's big, big numbers. This is reflective of the general fund on line one. If you look at that, and you'll see revenue of two hundred and two million and expenditures of two hundred and fourteen million. And you might look at that, or the public might look at this and say, wait a minute. Now, wait, how are you expending more than revenue is coming in? I need you to understand, and the public to understand, that's intentional. And the reason for that is often the way school funding works, we get money that comes in in one fiscal year, and we actually wait or have projects that tail over into a second fiscal year that we end up spending that money as we go forward. So we also put money aside knowing and expecting that costs will go up. So we expect our expenses to go up. Things, I mean, related to inflation, personnel costs, transportation, our utilities likely go up, facility maintenance. And we just mentioned safety, security, and technology. We also have expenses for that that need to come out of the general fund. So that's another area I think I would highlight for folks looking at that number and just saying, okay, talk to me about how those two numbers align. The additional information, the next lines underneath that, you'll notice that these are the additional funds that we have within the school district. So nutrition services and community education really are aligned in terms of revenue and expenditure. That's more how those funds work. Building construction. And so, well, wait a minute, there's no revenue at all, but we're spending a lot of money in construction. Again, that's the way construction work. We get money for the project that comes in, and projects can take multiple years as we move forward. So you'll see expenditures, the revenue has already been booked, if you will, in the system. And then our debt service fund, that really is to pay our principal and interest on our buildings, similar to how a homeowner might think about their mortgage, right? Money coming in, and that's how we pay our mortgage, if you will, principal and interest moving forward. Starting on page two, there are several pages that really outline the school board assumptions. We had those in front of you back in January, is when you guys actually approved those. But we use those in projecting and putting our budgets together. I will highlight a couple things that are different and changed from when you last saw this to what we'll update and use moving forward. So as an example, the legislature has indexed the per pupil funding that we get to inflation. So in the middle of page two, you're going to see a basic formula increase that on the paper says seven thousand four hundred and twenty-six. It's actually seven thousand four hundred and eighty-one per pupil. That represents a two point seven four percent increase. So we're going to update those numbers. That will be reflected in our budget as we move forward. But that is one thing the legislature did. We originally had projected two percent. But again, this is an example of conservatism, right? We're being conservative in our revenue. And actually, the state is, now that they indexed to inflation, we're going to see a little bit more. The state is also projecting a one-year hold harmless for compensatory funding. In the packet, we talk about using the state schedule or state rules to get that funding and distribute it. We have one more year of that funding for us. And then we should expect and will plan for that to change in the second year of this biennium or fiscal year twenty-seven as we move forward. So this time next year, you would see adjustments. Well, probably by January, as we're looking at some of those assumptions, that needs to change moving forward with that compensatory funding. Really, there were no other changes. We didn't make any changes to the instructional class size ranges or any of the other assumptions within that document that you provide us in terms of pulling all of this together. I would jump you ahead then to page four. And on page four, what you will see there is the projection for both our unassigned at the top of that page and the assigned or restricted general fund. When totaled together, if you did the math on this, it will add back up to page one. So if you add unassigned plus assigned restricted, it adds back to the numbers you just looked at at page one. But at the top of page four, we've included three years of the projected budgets. You're going to note that the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget looks very similar to the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Both of those, again, we're using assumptions from the first year, funding year of a legislative session. We use many of the same assumptions when we go into those years. And that's why I would take a look, and you'll notice that those are very similar in terms of how we go about projecting a budget for the following the, the following year. The only other thing I would highlight in that section, again, the top, the beginning fund balances, pretty stable, right? I mean, that's maintaining. I think that shows the stability of the district and our, our financial focus as we, as we move forward. So very little variance, financial stability of the district over time is important. Then on pages five through eight, all of the detail that goes along with the unassigned and assigned restricted funds, all of the categorical information is all included in, in there. Happy at any point to answer questions. The one thing I would note as you go through that is that we've, the far right column gives you a, a percent of proposed budget. So if you're thinking about, well, what are, what are you actually spending our money on? Where, where does it go, or what does that look like? That column will let you know the percentage that that category is of our, of our general fund budget. One of the things I would, I would call out, because I think this is, this is important, is that more than 75% of our general fund budget is actually focused on student support and instruction. And we have the graphic on, on page eight with the dollar that it kind of explains that. But that is an important focus of the district and, and will continue to be well into the future. As for the other funds in the district, those really start on page nine with nutrition services. So we project receiving 8 million in revenue and making 8 million in expenditures next year. Page 10 provides you again with the categorical funding or the categories within the nutrition services fund. Page 11 provides the community service fund outlook. Again, within that fund, we expect to receive 8 million in revenue and make $8 million of expenditures. Again, page 12 would provide you with the categorical funding in community services. Page 13 highlights our construction fund. Again, as I mentioned earlier, you'll note, this is an area where there is no revenue. We've already received our revenue, so we're, we're booking expenditures and they're being recorded, but the revenue was already received for our, our construction fund and the construction projects. We do anticipate spending about 17.7 million dollars on projects out of this fund next year. Page 14 contains information about the debt service fund. Again, that is where we're projecting revenue of 14.6 million, expenditures of 14.8. That's the principal and interest payments. That's how we pay for our, our buildings, our schools. And page 15 just outlines the bond schedule. So if anybody were looking and wanted to know, what are we, what is our LTFM in building bonds, those are all included there on page 15. Finally, pages 16 and 17, we've provided some graphs of the projected revenue and expenditure by district fund. You'll note that the general fund really makes up more than 80% of our overall financial activity with nutrition services, community service, construction, and debt services, making up much smaller percentages of that overall district budget. So tonight, I, I guess I would just want to conclude, reminding the board and the public that we'll continue to receive information from MDE. As we have that over the summer, we'll update all of that information and bring it back to you guys in the fall in the, in the amended budget that we bring to you. The other thing I guess I would, I would want you to know, and I think many of you do, but for the public too, we've already started our, the process of auditing this fiscal year. So the auditors have already come, spent some time with us. We have them scheduled. We are looking great. So they are excited to come in, I think, and, and work with us. I think our reputation, I think the work we've done here attracts, right? That auditors come in and say, yeah, great, auditing Mounds View, that's, that's wonderful. We're happy, happy to do that. And for us and for the public, we want to be transparent. So we, we do that quickly. We do it upfront as we're just ending the fiscal year. As I said, they've already been in, they're looking at our books. We're very transparent about what we're doing. And I think that helps us maintain really a very solid financial position as we move forward. So with that, administration is recommending approval of this proposed budget for 25-26 school year, and I'd be happy to take any questions. Let Paula grade me later.
I don't have a que, oh, I was going to say, I don't have a question. I just want to really say I appreciate the approach. I feel like, again, to your points earlier, we do look at this through a very fiscally conservative lens and approach to the budget. And I just, I appreciate that because we've been able to keep class sizes within that same range. I've been on the board now, this is my fourth year. I feel like class sizes have, have stayed in the same range. We've been keeping costs stagnant for families on items like transportation, despite transportation costs rising. So I do feel like, again, we, we do a lot of due diligence. We have a lot of different discussions. And then, of course, the team like Paula and the rest of her team just do some amazing work to make sure that we're managing within the confines, right, of the budget and, and making some hard decisions along the way, of course, but just making sure that those have very minimal impact on the classroom and on our students. So I just wanted to say thank you so much and to, to you, Lennox, and you, Paula, and then, of course, your team for doing such a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Yolanda. Jim?
Yeah, no, echo what Yolanda said is quite simply is that thank you for all your good work on this. Our budget process is long, it's ongoing, it changes. You know, our fiscal year starts July 1, and we get over 60% of our funding from the state. And we found out, what, about 10 days ago, how much money we were getting from the state. So it makes it a little bit challenging that it's June 17th. But, you know, we all, you know, work together on this. And as for Yolanda says, we want the school experience and the classroom experience to be very stable for families and kids, and our employees too. So I'm very proud that we approach our budgeting very fiscally conservative and even out any bumps that we might see down the road and still be able to do a lot of the great things and innovative things that we do in the district. So thank you for your good work.
Thanks, Jim. Any other comments or questions? All right, I would entertain a motion to adopt the 2025-26 budget as presented.
So moved.
Second.
The 25-26 budget has been moved and seconded. Any discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again, Paula, to you and your team. All right, now, we have item 5 dot 1, approval of policy revisions. And I'd like to turn it over to Heidi Danielson, School Board Vice Chair.
Great. Just want to give an update on our policy work. So last summer, the board formed a policy subcommittee, was comprised of Alyssa Dyer Nelson from our board, myself, and a former Mounds View born Bemmer, Amy Jones. Our policy committee began meeting last fall. We reviewed all of our board policies and district policies with the goal of aligning the language, updating policies to reflect current board processes, and reviewing our evaluation. The full board has reviewed the suggested changes to the policies at several work sessions throughout the year. There's lots of different policies here. We divide our policies into different categories. We have a set of policies that cover the board and superintendent relationship and association, some policies around board governance, the way we govern ourselves as a board. Ends and goals are the ones that, all the policies that pertain to the way we effectively manage our programs and our schools. And so there is quite a healthy list here of policies that we are, would like to recommend, that we have reviewed them. We have two that we'd recommend for deletion. We've changed the way in which we get feedback from the public. So we'd like to delete BG 0204, and as well as EG 5150, which is naming school district facilities. We haven't used that policy in a while, and it was on hold. And then a whole list of policies that are presented for approval as revised. Again, most of these policies had minor language changes to them, updating them to reflect the language of the equity promise, updating, I think we had some he, she, and we updated it to they, you know. Some, a lot of them were very minor policies. But anyway, we would recommend that we adopt all of the policies listed here that have been reviewed by the board.
Thank you, Heidi. Any questions?
No, just a thank you to Heidi and Alyssa for doing this. This is kind of long and arduous work. But when we looked at our policies, some of them just didn't apply much anymore. Some of them didn't make great sense. Some of the language and references were antiquated. So, you know, something good to do every 10 years or so. God bless you. Thank you for doing it.
Same. Thank you to Ewan.
A few long nights, but we made it through.
Yes, we appreciate you.
Yes, we very much appreciate it. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to adopt the policies presented as revised and delete the policies recommended for deletion.
So moved.
Second.
The policies have been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so next up, we are at six dot, or, sorry, five dot two, superintendent's year end evaluation. So every year, we evaluate Superintendent Lennox mid-year, and then we do a year-end review where each of the board members can provide feedback and, you know, any suggestions for areas of improvement. And so this evening, Heidi Danielson is going to give a brief update on that year-ended evaluation. Heidi?
Great. Well, like Diane said, all of the board members got a chance to complete an assessment, and then we met as a group. And then Diane and I were able to meet with Superintendent Lennox and share feedback from our, from the board. I just start by saying, as in past evaluations, the board is overwhelmingly grateful for Superintendent Lennox' leadership of the district. And again, this year, we, we've seen so many great things happen in our schools. All seven district operational goals were achieved for this year, and we got a chance to not only help decide what those goals were, but hear updates throughout the year. And you and your team revised those as you went throughout the year and investigated what was best for the district. And board members included feedback about the recognition of the proactive nature of the goals and how well they were implemented. As we looked at Superintendent Lennox's management style and leadership skills, I'm just going to summarize a few things that were brought up in evaluation by some of our board members. We overwhelmingly feel that Superintendent Lennox builds and communicates a clear, shared vision for the district, fosters a culture of equity, collaboration, and innovation, aligns resources with district goals and priorities, and balances competing interests while keeping student outcomes at the center. So again, we had much more information that we've presented to Superintendent Lennox, but that's kind of a high-level overview. We're very pleased with the work that you and your, all of your teams, your 1,600 employees have done throughout the year, again, for students and families, like we keep talking about tonight. And we're very excited to have you continue on as leader of our district.
Thank you, Heidi. All right, moving on to item 6 dot 1, updates, Association of Metropolitan School Districts. Legislative, Jim?
Yes, thank you. AMSD, the Associated Metropolitan School Districts, we were up at the Capitol till the last hours, and I'm pleased to report the legislature was once again good to public education. As our superintendent noted, we did get a 2.74 increase percent per student aid per pupil. Some things we care about, Q Comp, which supports excellence in our teachers, were, was maintained after threatening getting cut. Paid school breakfast, lunch, and special ed programs that we had advocated for previously all remained intact. So we're really pleased about that. There's always small little things, like there were some small transportation cuts and things like that. But overall, I believe it was a pretty positive, as a matter of fact, a very positive session for public education and supporting students and their families. So that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Shawna, any updates on Northeast Metro 916?
Yeah, so just as a reminder, Northeast Metro 916 is an intermediate school district that Mounds View utilizes for some of our special education services, as well as career and technical education programs for students in our district. So we met the first Wednesday of this month. It was a very routine meeting, much like we did tonight, approved a budget for that school district, recognized some staff that were retiring, and heard some highlights about graduations that we had in the district. And we will take the month of July off, and we will meet again for that board in August.
Great. Thank you, Shawna. Now we have item 6 dot 2, school board member reports. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to share or report out on?
I'd just like to say, I think many of us have mentioned it previous to our June commencement ceremonies, but even at those ceremonies, it's one of my favorite times of the year is getting to see all of our students as they've acclimated through our schools and, and are looking at what's next. So it's a great time of celebration. I was able to go to several different graduation ceremonies, and I had one person come up to me and say, you sat through that whole thing? I said, it is so much fun for us to see all those students and their families celebrate the accomplishments of the students and just see what's next for each of them. So congratulations to each one of the graduates of the district.
I got to attend the adult basic education graduation. So for students who, for whatever reason, didn't finish their degree when they were in high school, they can come back and get their GEDs. We had quite a few graduates get their GED. We had, also had students get certified in paraprofessional, some career, some computer technology things, certified nursing assistant. So it was a great celebration of our adult learners and really neat to be a part of.
Jim, anything?
You're good? And then I also got to attend Irondale's graduation ceremony, and that was amazing, as always, to, to be in the room with, with so many graduates and be able to shake so many sweaty hands. It was, it's truly a joy to see the excitement and, and the fun reactions from the, from the crowd and those that come to support the graduate. So it was a great time. I also attended the Mounds View Schools Education Foundation Board Meeting, and we had four board members whose term was up on the board. So we did say goodbye to four great board members. So I wished them all well. And then we added, we got to vote on four new board members joining the foundation board. So I just want to thank those who have served on that board and, and those who committed to serve a new term. We appreciate the work that you guys do because the foundation just does some really great work to support our Mounds View schools. So thank you so much for the work that you guys are doing on that board.
Thank you. Yes, and I also was able to attend Irondale's graduation. It was bittersweet for me. My son graduated, so there were a few tears. I'll just be very honest, but it was a very special evening. So congratulations again to all of our graduates. If there is nothing else to come before the board, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.